Good evening. Welcome to the September 22nd, 2025 study session of Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Laura Toye?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the civil republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toye. All right, so this meeting sets the agenda for the 2026 regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, October 6th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. We have all members of council here, and I'm going to jump right into audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for items not on the agenda. Name and some form of location, and you have three minutes.
Jim Bigga, Livonia, Michigan. One quick question. I know this isn't on the agenda, but Monday night, we're having a budget review, and I looked through the budget documents from last week. I couldn't see if we had consultants in there, so for Monday's meeting, could we identify if there are any consultants in the budget? That's my only question for that. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Eileen McDonald. No, this is not Oz, it's Livonia. A joke, sorry. Anyway, to continue, I think what Laura was trying to express in the earlier, Laura Janik was trying to express, that if an item is brought to council for voting, that monies should be already ready to be funded, because that's what it says. So I think that's where she was getting her frustration at, with that discussion about Rotary Park. And secondly, I know when we were at the committee meeting in reference to the budget last week, where can I find the attachments, that presentation? I couldn't find it, so I didn't know. If you could just let us know.
Got it.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Steve King, Coventry Gardens. I want to touch on the budget a little bit, that of the meeting, the budget meeting. Just want to give a shout out to Linda. She was, I thought, very prepared for that budget meeting. She had all her documents. She had all the, everything marked. She had a lot of very pertinent questions, and I thought that was great. And one thing that stood out to me with the budget is cars, 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 cars. It was like Oprah. Everybody gets a car. So I hope that you guys look at cars, conferences, and coffee. You know, just stuff that isn't really necessary. And protect police parks and people. I just did a quick perusal, and I have found $7 million in savings. And I can share the documents with you. I have red marker all over it. So I sure hope I get an opportunity to dig into that budget where what I do actually matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other audience communication?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If there's no, is there no one getting up?
No.
I just wanted to mention Laura Janik brought up that money was allocated or budgeted. A lot of times, no offense, that changes before it hits our agenda. So, you know, anything could have happened. Let's just put it that way. It's not written in stone until we actually vote on it and go to the next meeting to approve the minutes, as I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, and I'm not trying, it's a good observation, you know, she had, but I also think that, you know, there are times that we do change things before they ever hit the agenda. And I know it was on agenda, but it gets changed. And I could be wrong on that.
If I may.
Please.
So we did have confirmation from the Director of Parks and Recreation that at that time, it was funded. So if we were to vote on it at that said time, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were to vote, that would have, the funds were there. There was some maneuvering of some funds, but it was ready to go.
Okay, then I stand corrected.
Vice President, I got Councilwoman Buzinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to the resident, the entire packet from the finance and budget meeting, I just looked on the website. It's there. It's under the Finance and Budget Committee meeting. As of September 18th, it's 545 pages. So if you can't sleep, it's all there. The complete thing. I just double-checked. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, no, no, we'll be able to, yes. Councilwoman Buzinski.
The presentation is also in Civic Clerk. You can find it, if it's easier for you, if you go to my council Facebook page. It's the first link. That's noted. It's also the first attachment in the agenda packet that you can find on Civic Clerk. As to the Rotary Pavilion funding, I'll just reaffirm that the administration had budgeted funds available. Council chose to send it to committee because it was determined that there was more questions that needed to be answered, so that's why it wasn't approved that evening. But that's not necessarily because of the budget in its specific.
Thank you. Anything else from council? All right. We're going to move into the study agenda. Starting with item one is a block party request. This comes to us from the Simmons to be held Saturday, October 25th, 2025, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Melrose Street. Do we have the petitioner here? I do not see it. Counsel, do I have direction in our normal fashion?
Maybe put it on the regular.
Yeah.
Just to be consistent with how we've been handling these, I think putting it.
So we have an approving on regular. We'll get with Sarah and let her know to tell the petitioner to show up to the next meeting. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item two is a block party and street barricading. Comes to us from the Graysons to be held Friday, October 31st, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on Emerson Court to West Chicago, and on Tulip, from Emerson Court to Harrison. Do we have the petitioner? Counsel.
Same motion as was given.
So we have an approving on regular. We'll let them know. Anything from the audience on this block party? Seeing none, we're going to jump into item three is a request to waive the formal bidding process and authorize the purchase of Flock safety cameras and software products. This comes to us from the Division of Police to enhance crime prevention and investigation from budgeted funds and grant funds. Chief, great to see you.
Good to see you, Council President McCullough and council. Good evening. Go Lions. This first item is for, I'm very excited about this, a new Flock camera system, which is license plate readers stationary throughout our city. Their only job is to identify cars and license plates that are wanted, missing folks, anybody that we're looking for that can help keep our city safe. And as you know, license plates are public and can be read by anybody and run by anybody, including local law enforcement. So this is a great deal. I've been waiting a little bit to bring this system to you all, because I was waiting on a grant fund. And I'm happy to say we got grant monies from the Auto Theft Prevention Authority through the State of Michigan funds for 37% of the cost of the first year, which is outstanding. It's about $60,000. And so with this process, we will be putting in 21 Flock cameras throughout the city, 10 long-range Flock cameras, two dual solar LPR standard bundles, which will be more flexible. And we'll be getting the enhanced LPR upgrade, which allows us access to every law enforcement agency in the region to put maybe a suspect vehicle from our jurisdiction, or a missing person from our jurisdiction into the entire region-wide, statewide, even somewhat throughout the country, Flock has now become. And we can help locate that person faster, saving lives. I've got many stories I could give you if you need them about successes with the program. Just so you know, virtually every jurisdiction in this region surrounding us has Flock cameras now. I just don't think they waited for grants like we did. Novi, Farmington Hills, Northfield Township, Westland, Redford Township, and I can go on and on. Southfield PD, Dearborn, all these jurisdictions have those. They are not facial recognition. I've heard some pushback on that on social media and other jurisdictions. It is very direct on license plate recognition and vehicle description, which is fantastic. And you see in the packet the total cost for that. The great thing about this too, I'd like you guys to know, is that we will not own the cameras. We don't have to maintain them. We don't have to maintain the poles. Flock maintains all of that. We lease them on a yearly basis, which I think is just fantastic. I do want to just mention one success story, just to give the audience an idea of how much this can help our city. And it was out of Plymouth Police Department. They had a missing Alzheimer's patient with dementia that had driven away, and the family reported him missing. They got the vehicle on the plate, they got the plate on the vehicle, which was a Jeep Compass, and they put it into the Flock system. It pinged in Muskegon County on the west side. Within a couple hours, Muskegon County Sheriff's found the person who was driving erratically through that county, hours away from his home. They were able to reunite him with his family. That's the kind of things that this system can do for our city, including finding suspects that harm our citizens. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
So right now, I have the Vice President, I have Councilman Morgan, I have Councilman Donavich. And I just, really quick, we'll share one too. I had a buddy, he was actually originally from Livonia, and he is a veteran, was having a rough point in his life when all, he left, couldn't find him. They found him in, I think, North Carolina via the Flock system. They were able to ping everything, so it's incredible. So Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chief, for coming tonight and explaining this to us. I mean, I see all the advantages of the system, especially with the real-time data, the alerts, you know, the quicker response time, all the things that we can do and that you've explained. I knew some people had privacy concerns, but thank you for explaining it. It's just the license plates. And, you know, I'm actually excited that we're bringing this to our community, so I appreciate that. I'm going to offer an approving on consent, if that's okay with my colleagues. Also, I saw that you brought one of our newer captains with you. Maybe you could.
I did.
Introduce us.
Our newest captain, we recently promoted, just a month or so ago, a couple months ago, is Captain Jessica Sabatin back. She's here, obviously, to learn about the process and to be here when I can't be here.
That's awesome.
Thanks for coming, Captain.
So I just wanted to welcome our new captain back there as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, Chief, I know I'm probably dating myself when they were first put these things into play, and they had them on the state police cars and put them on some of our cars many, many years ago. It seems like probably forever. But are these going on our patrol cars, or are they going to be stationary? Because I'm not really familiar with this particular system. If you could maybe explain where they go and what type of maintenance.
Great question, Councilman. They'll be on stationary devices throughout the city, not on scout cars. We already have few acts on license plate readers on our scout cars. So these will be stationary ones on strategic roadways throughout the city that match up with our bordering jurisdictions, so we don't have extra coverage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Councilman Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Chief, for being here, and congrats to your new captain. I just wonder which one's better, her or Captain Markot?
They're all my favorites.
They're all your favorites. That's spoken like a true chief. Thanks for bringing this forward. I know you had brought this before the council, some discussions. And I've been excited about it, because it's continued to keep our residents safe. And like you mentioned, Livonia is one of the only communities, really, that doesn't have the Flock system in our region. So it's nice to kind of fill that hole here and participate in this regional effort to catch bad guys and keep our residents safe, and even help out some of our citizens that maybe are in a medical emergency, and this system has proven to help them. My question is, is there's only 21. Why not more?
So there's actually 35 total. You've got 21 of the standards, you have another, I believe, 10 of the long range, and you've got a couple of bundles getting up to 35. So that's to start. We want to make sure that our strategic plan, which has been going on for a year or so, developed a committee for where the cameras should go, dealt with other cities, and what's been successful for them. And right now, these 35 cameras will be a great start. As an example, Dearborn went from starting with, I think, 35 or so. They've got 90 now. So you typically move up over the years if you see that the success of the program and other areas we could put them.
And naturally, that price would go up in case as you get more cameras. So this is a two-year contract for a total of $295,000. You anticipate that will increase in future years for council?
So, no, the first year is infrastructure and all that going into, which we got the grant for them, putting the system in. The first year is the most expensive year, because we're putting all the infrastructure in, the stationary cameras. And I should note that this is from budgeted funds, but it's being paid for by forfeiture funds, not general funds from the citizens.
That's awesome. No, great job to you and your department. Continue to look for creative ways and advancements in law enforcement industry to keep our residents safe and tell bad guys, if you're going to commit crimes, don't come to Livonia, because we're going to catch you. So great job to your team.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Morgan. Councilman Toye.
If I may, to the chief. Chief, we're hearing bad guys and people like that. Is this system also that we can use it for good things, like the Amber Alert when there's a missing child or whatever? Because if you're a senior and you just want to escape away from your family, you're getting in a lot of trouble. And, you know, I'm being funny, of course, but I just wondered if there's criteria for this system.
It works for all of that, Councilwoman Toye. We've had success stories with missing elderly folks who get lost while driving. We've had success stories with missing folks. There was a success story out of, I believe it was Kalamazoo, where a father who'd lost custody kidnapped his child, and they caught him in Kentucky through LPR, through Flock.
Or even for human trafficking.
All of that. It's a great system to help us find people in need, and that includes noncriminal folks who are missing, having mental health issues, et cetera. It's just a win-win.
That's great. That's why I wonder what the criteria was, if it expanded beyond just the average or above-average criminal.
Well, suppressing crime is important, too, and that's our job.
Absolutely, for sure. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. So we have an approving on consent. Anybody else from council? Anything from the audience? All right. Moving on to item four. Yeah, we've got, this is, I think, yeah, request to waive a sealed bid process and authorize the purchase of two marked police vehicles using the State of Michigan Cooperative Bid Pricing. Comes to us again from the Division of the Police to be held, to be replaced as part of the vehicle replacement program from budgeted funds. And my favorite thing to do, and it goes into Councilman Donavich's dumpster enclosure-type of thing, is to always point out that cooperative purchasing agreements are us leveraging the best pricing that's already been out there and taking advantage of it. It is not just to waive the bidding process, it is to celebrate it. See what I did there? To celebrate the savings, Chief.
Thank you, Council President McCullough. You are so helpful for us division heads whenever we use that system, and we are here tonight using contracts for best bidding processes. So we're asking for two new Tahos marked vehicles to be put into the fleet as a regular maintenance through our older vehicles. The reason for Tahos this time around, I'm sure everyone has seen, we got over a million hits on our Facebook page about the new grappler system. And that grappler system, which is that net that comes out and grabs the rear axle of a car that doesn't want to stop for us and wants to endanger everyone in our city when they don't pull over for us, that grappler system worked great twice already. And I wanted to make sure that if it was working, functioning properly, and it was a success story, which it is, that we were kind of holding back and holding two more Tahos, because a grappler cannot go on not full-frame vehicles. So it can only, right now, in our fleet, go on Tahos, Yukons, or pickup trucks. Can't go on the Explorers, Chargers, Toruses, et cetera.
It's like Scorpion from Mortal Kombat. All right, see what I did there?
I mean, I've gotten phone calls across the country about this grappler and that video. But seriously speaking, not only does it protect the public, it protects my officers. They don't have to get out of the vehicle. Everyone's familiar with the old stopsticks, and it's just so timely. And so every time an officer is killed in line of duty in this country, I get notice through the Law Enforcement Memorial, and I present a condolence letter to that department's chief. I just signed one today for an officer in Kansas who deployed a stopstick and was killed by the suspect, because you have to get out of the car and put yourself in harm's way. This grappler system is a game changer in keeping our officers safe.
That video you had, that went viral, a lot of people look at it, and they'll celebrate the fact that that was the coolest police maneuver. But just like you said, I mean, technology's out there. That was one heck of a video. And it did the rounds, but I mean, it shows what's out there. It shows why we're the best.
And I want to be clear, it was cleared up on Facebook when we were able to put out more information. We did not pull the axle off the vehicle. The bad guy, Councilman Donavich, pulled the axle off of the own vehicle. The system doesn't do that. It's very safe and very, very effective. So thank you for that. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to just offer an approving on consent, if that's okay with my colleagues.
Yes. So we have an approving on consent. Councilwoman Toye, she's still good?
I agree with them.
Councilman Donavich?
No, but, Mr. President, since you brought it up, that was an awesome video. I think if anyone is not aware, a suspect, the bad guy, was dumb enough to run from the Livonia Police. And we have very good technology in our community, and this device is mounted on the front of the patrol vehicles. And it's a large net device that is able to be deployed from the control of the officer driving, and essentially catches the vehicle, and they pull the vehicle to a safe stop and are able to stop endangering citizens when these people run from the cops. And it was awesome to see that. As council members, we approve these things. You just read them on a piece of paper, look at the packet, but to see it actually in use in reality, and how great your officer trained, that was awesome, and we saved some lives that day. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Mr. President.
And I will say, you know, and I just celebrated my 36th year here with the Livonia Police Department. I wish we had this when I was out there working, because we know I'm stuck behind a desk most days. But it's a great, great new technology, and it makes our community much safer for our officers and our citizens. So thank you.
Anything else from council? So we do have an approving on consent. Chief, I must tell you that that made my day to share that with Chief Hilden and Deputy Chief McKenzie.
Oh, they called.
I know they did. Those are my coworkers, so. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Name and location? You got two minutes.
Yeah, Steve King, Coventry Gardens. I was at the Green Fair in Ann Arbor recently, and it's just amazing. Ann Arbor, you know, their way out there with sustainability. And they have an electric scout car, and they have an electric school bus. And I met with the folks that drive them. They absolutely love them, and I'm hoping in the future, we'll start moving that direction. As far as the grappler goes, I've been talking about it for years. That technology is 10 years old. It's not something that's brand-new. It's been out there for 10 years. It's new to us, which is great. And something else I wanted to mention, we got one drone. The officer, I was told, that operates the drone has been promoted to sergeant, so now we have nobody certified to fly that drone. And Farmington just recently used their drone to catch a perpetrator using a drone with thermal imaging. They caught him in about six minutes, so I'm hoping we'll move in that direction, too. Drones are the future, as evidenced in the Ukraine-Russian war. Everything is drones now. And there's, Flybox is a new company that's going to be delivering your food to your front door, and that's coming very soon, all over the country. Drones are the future, so I hope we'll consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the audience?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sorry, we just heard something that is not accurate. Chief, can you please elaborate to that, that apparently we no longer have an officer that's trained to use equipment?
If you insist, Councilman.
Sorry about that.
I will tell you this. The grappler is not new technology, but it has never been the State of Michigan until we got it. First time it's been used in the State of Michigan was by Livonia Police Department. I don't know exactly how old it is, but I know it's new to this area. And, as I mentioned, many calls from around this jurisdiction. Additionally, we don't have one drone. We have four drones. We have a pretty robust drone program that we use consistently for suspects, but also for missing folks and all kinds of good reads, things that the LPR do. It's simply untrue to say those things, and thank you for asking.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. You know, freedom of speech is very important, but being truthful and accurate is more important sometimes. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from council? No, I already went to council. So we're going to move on to item five. Is a request to authorize an additional expenditure. Comes to us from the Department of Civil Service in an amount of $5,000 above the not-to-exceed amount of $30,000 to Emco, in order to continue to provide assessment center services for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 from budgeted funds. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Good to see you all. I'm Janine Liebel on behalf of the Civil Service Department. This is a request working within the framework and parameters set forth by council for financial oversight. So this amount was already in my approved budget, and I'm just coming back so that I can go above the amount that our limit for spending. We use assessment centers in order to help us find the best candidates. You know, the civil service process is designed to be a blind process. Then when we get, depending on the number, the top candidates have been narrowed down. They come through an assessment center where they have an interview, role-play scenarios, they give a formal presentation, it's a panel evaluation, and it really helps us to develop that candidate and to see what their thoughts are in a wide range of different topics. We work closely with Emco, their sole-source provider, in coming up with the topics that will be germane to that person's upcoming job. We typically use, I went through an assessment center, so we do it for some of our department heads. I found it to be, it brought a lot of value, I thought, to the process, and it was tough. We used it for the fire chief, for our police lieutenant and sergeants, and our senior fire captain most recently.
Awesome. Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Toye.
If I may, to Ms. Liebel. Emco, is that a state entity or?
No, they're a private company.
I'm not familiar with them. Yeah, the what?
They're a private company.
Well, they're private, okay. So is this, what is the purpose of this? Is this, because you said it's additional money from something before? Is this, was there something before this or something? Or did I mishear you?
No, so we've already budgeted for this amount in our testing supplies, because every year I know that I'm going to use Emco for, well, when it comes up for director-level recruit.
Oh, director, okay.
Director-level hiring, as well as a lot of our promotional exams. So it's typically not just a straight seniority. It's where you go through and you really prove your merit.
So do we, so this would be for more of a directorship, kind of like, what are we missing right now?
The library director is our most upcoming one.
Okay. Is the library director, at one time, it was going to go on an agenda, and we had a little pushback on it, because, and I'll be quite frank with you, I've had a couple of phone calls of people from within the library structure and outside city, or within City Hall, asking me why we're not hiring from within, in the library case. Do we have an answer for that? I guess there's qualified people. I don't know.
I do have an answer for that. And it's that we run the process. The library director specifically, it's not an appointed position. It's not a mayoral appointment. It's a commission appointment. The commission wants to find the best candidates out there. And so in trying to find that candidate, to go through the civil service process, because it's a blind process, that's why, I don't know if we've had internal candidates apply. The process is extremely blind, but I hope that we do. We do have some very excellent employees over there, and if they're interested in the position, I'd love to see them all rise and thrive.
So how soon do we need this money? Pretty quick here, in the $30,000?
I mean, relatively quick.
Yeah, okay.
No suitcase required for it, but in November, we're scheduled to have our assessment center for the library director, and then shortly thereafter, we'll have police sergeant and lieutenants.
Oh, okay. And then, so we really don't know, and it's up to the commission, who's appointed by the mayor. If I'm not, if I stand corrected, I believe commissioners are appointed by the mayor, right? I don't know if they're confirmed by us or not. I can't remember. But is there, is there anyone in there that has a skill set? I know we have a woman in there right now that is, what, acting, do we call them?
An interim. The person who's currently serving the capacity of library directors, our interim director.
Mterm, yes.
Interim, yep. And that's Lindsey Fricki, and she's the number two in charge over there.
Okay. Because I heard there was people with masters and whatever in there.
All of our librarians have masters. Pardon me, I meant to interrupt you.
No, please, go ahead.
To be a librarian, you have to have a master's degree. It's a requirement of the job, of the profession. I think that's something that most people don't know, so when they go there, you know, when they go there, you know, sometimes they think it's just a love of books, but it's really a love of all the things that go into not just being a librarian, but the pursuit of education.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. That helps me understand some of it. Yep.
I got Councilman Morgan, then I got Councilman Donovan.
Yes. Good evening. I have a question, a couple of questions, actually, because on the actual paper agenda and on our notes here, there's a couple discrepancies. It indicates here that it's just for Emco. But on, on the notes, it says for the library director. Is this just for the library director only we're spending this type of money? Or is this for all year, for all heads of departments that we may hire?
So, Emco is not, while I am, while we are using the assessment center to try and make sure we find the right candidate for the library director, and we did it when we hired Kristen Edson as well. The assessment center is just a part of what we call the examination, and that's the process, the hiring process within civil service. So, in different examinations, you may have a written test, you may have a typing test, different things that prove that you're qualified, qualified, and then that you're able to do the job. The assessment center is really just a tool that we use. It's a tool to make sure that our candidates can get up, give a presentation to a whole room about themselves and about, you know, specific topic. Can they do a very interactive role playing that, you know, the, the person who's role playing with you does their best to unseat you and sort of throw you off your talking points. So, yeah, I went through it myself. It was stressful. My department laughs because they said I came out, and I was like, oh, my God, I'm sweating. But I was. You know, it's a, it's a rigorous process, but it's designed to make sure that the person we're hiring does a good job. Everyone gets ranked throughout that process. And then Emco provides a whole, you know, analysis and package to us. And then they also will meet with the candidates afterward to give them feedback.
So, I understand that, and that sounds good. But secondly, I mean, I know we're, I'm speeding forward a little bit, but we have the same request. Next one regarding Emco, why can't one of them be used for all of this instead of purchasing?
Instead of two item agendas?
Well, yeah. Money wise, I, why wouldn't we spend $30,000 and use Emco for the whole process instead of doubling up for each?
We are. So, Emco, they, they don't do the whole recruiting process. They really provide you with a panel of evaluators who are going to come in and tell you how your candidates did. The reason why there's two items here was just so that to separate it, depending on how we were trying to spend it. But it's all, it's all part of my 24, 25 budget in the testing supplies. So, the amount doesn't vary based on who we're hiring. Typically, the amount depends on how many people are going through the testing process. So, for our library director, we'll have four candidates. But for police sergeant and police lieutenant, we don't typically limit that. So, depending on how many people apply and are qualified for the job, then we'll have maybe a two-day assessment center rather than just a one day. So, that's why the price has some fluctuation. I think it depends on how, how many options we're putting into each assessment center.
But the cost is all inclusive, and you just deal it out at 5,000 per test? Is that how it's?
Uh, no. The, the test costs really, it varies. So, my sergeant and lieutenant assessment is a little bit more because there's a lot more people. My library director one costs less because we just have four candidates going through it. We hope to have four candidates going through it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, I got Councilman Donovan, then I got Councilwoman Sheil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Ms. Leibel. Thanks for being here this evening. I just want to remind council, we already approved Emco and this, this testing organization, these assessment centers. We already approved that earlier this year. We are now just amending the budgeted funds because they need additional dollars. The city has been doing assessment centers for years, decades. Every city does them, whether it's for captains in the police department, or fire department, or going up to chief, department heads, just standard stuff. We've been doing this for decades. Assessment centers are par for the course for every community, and not even municipalities, but also the private sector. Private sectors hire companies to administer these assessment centers, examinations. These are meant to be third-party testing entities that help keep the system on the up and up and make sure it's non-bias, and they perform to the highest standards. Very capable people come out of these testament, test assessments. So, standard, we already approved this in May of this year. So, with that being said, I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheil.
Okay. Thank you for being here this evening.
Glad to be here.
So, my question is, when this was approved earlier, it was approved for 30,000, and now you're asking for 5,000 above that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And this is for '24, '25. The next item is for '25, '26. Is that correct?
Yes, but because, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Oh, because it has some, a wraparound capacity. I didn't want to exceed that amount in one year. So, we wanted to make sure that, because otherwise, I would just be here in another month or another month and a half to ask you for the same thing.
December 1st. Yeah, okay. And so, in our, in your budget, does it only have 30,000 right now, and you want to increase it to 35?
No. My, so the amount that I have in my budget, we're good with that. I think we did a pretty good job of assessing how much we would need. We're just looking to spend, I think, when council put in some financial parameters, we had to come and request authority to spend over 20,000, the 20,000 amount, or receive, file that whole paradigm, which I think is useful. But this is just to let you all know that we're, you know, bumping up against that amount.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me now. Thank you.
So, we do have a regular, or we have an approving on consent right now, council.
Both ways.
What's that?
Both ways, please. Approving and denying.
Oh, well.
So, they'll take it to regular. You want it on regular.
Yeah. It wouldn't be consent.
All right. So, we, we have it on the regular. Okay. So, we have an approving right now on the regular. Would you like, and a denying. So, we have an approving and a denying.
Both ways. Yep.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Name, address, well, name, location, two minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Bigga, Livonia, Michigan. As a prior civil servant for the federal government, 34 years, I've never had to go to a third-party testing entity. Having worked for the military for those 34 years, I've never heard the United States military using a third-party entity to weed out the military. It's always been in-house. This, to me, just seems like we have an in-house capability that doesn't have the ability to do the in-house capability. That said, I'm objecting to this expense because not only does it sound like 30,000, it sounds like $40,000 when you add the two sets of numbers together. So, and I don't remember the May meeting where this came up to begin with, or I would have stood up and objected then, because I think that as a city of this size, we should be able to do this work in-house. We shouldn't need to go outhouse to do employee management. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Pat Brockway, Livonia, Michigan. Also, I do currently work for the federal government. I've been on interview panels for, not to director-level positions, but I have talked with the people that have been sitting on director-level positions, executive director level. And again, just to reiterate, we don't, and this is no disrespect, just we don't utilize a third-party system to do hiring. It's, we have people that are capable, people that know what the job is, that can sit on panels, that can ask the interview questions, that can present an assessment, that can ask scenarios. And we conduct that because they know the jobs. So, I have a hard time understanding why we would need a third party when we do have a very capable system in place within the city that could ask questions and assess and do the headhunting for positions. So, just, that's my take on it. From a federal side, we don't ever have to use a third party. So, why in the municipal do we have to?
Thank you. Good evening.
Denise Micah, Livonia. I, too, was a civil servant for many years. I, too, sat on a lot of interview panels when we were going for a director, which is higher job than the mayor of Livonia, say, if it was, if it was not an elected position. We had a team of people. And what was the criteria? People evaluated it. People had in-person interviews. You had them prepare a presentation. I've done a lot of that, a lot of that. Weighting averages of what they do, you know, appearance and all sorts of knowledge of the job. But besides that, I'm looking at the August 2025 paper. That was the addendum added. And it's for Raymond Robson, recruiter for the director of finance for, I can't believe this number, okay? $16,999.99. Wow. How could you come up to something at that amount? Exactly. It's right under $17,000, isn't it? Just etched underneath. I'd love to see what that would, what that amount was from. And then the other director of the library, had it was taken off the agenda, that it was going to be under the 20 or 25,000, and it was going to be to $17,000. Now, all of a sudden, now it's $30,000. So, is this a switch to what was done before? We just want transparency. If you guys want to use our, we'll offer, Jim and I, we'll offer our services to help you come up with a system. And I'm sure we have other people that can help you do this at, within the amount of money that we have budgeted for your jobs. You know, no disrespect on that. But, I mean, we've, we've hired, I've hired a lot of people in my time, and a lot of different technical people. And thank you.
That's fine. Thank you. I am going to go back to council now, seeing that there's any more audience communication, seeing none. Councilman Donovan, then Councilwoman Bzinski, then the Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of getting off topic with this, with this, with this issue. But, you know, as mentioned a few times, that the federal government does not hire third-party contractors for senior executive services and other positions. The OPM does, in fact, hire third-party companies to hire senior members. Municipalities hire third-party companies. And I know people are going to shake their head, well, you know what, there's this really great tool called the internet, and you can search things up and do your own investigation. And municipality's been hiring organizations for decades to help them hire. But also, when they do hire people, they put together non-bias platforms with people that specialize. They don't make this a mockery or a joke. They're going to just hire me to go hire people. I don't know how to hire a police chief, but you know who does? Are professionally trained people that work in human resources, that do this every single day for hundreds of communities and hundreds of private contractors and companies out there. We voted on this with zero issue in May. We voted on this countless times while I've been on city council. But now, all of a sudden, you know, it's an issue because some people think they know how to hire people. It's just such a mockery, and it's very frustrating when we are hiring dedicated people. These are captains of the fire department, captains in the police departments, trained executives, high-level positions. We have department heads leaving this community because there are jokes being had because of elected officials and games being played. And it is so frustrating when residents want to get their jobs done and have issues actually heard and listened to. And department heads are saying, you know what? I don't want to deal with the city anymore. I'm leaving. So, we're having a hard time keeping our departmental staff, paying them adequate wages, giving them benefits. And then, when you guys come before us to just try to hire people, doing the same thing you've been doing for decades, all of a sudden, now it's a controversy issue, and it just makes no sense to me at all. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. I got Councilwoman Bzinski.
Yeah, I just thought it was important to just, again, reaffirm that this isn't a hiring firm. It is a testing firm. So, this, this, Emco is not collecting resumes. They are not evaluating candidates. They are taking candidates that have already been evaluated and, and identified as finalist. And then, or though in the police, that's a different agenda item. Anyways, for this one, a select number of candidates who've been evaluated from their application process for additional testing. So, just to clarify, this is not a headhunter, firm thing. It is a testing for, I already identified candidates for these positions.
Thank you. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't realize this was going to be such a hot topic tonight. But this was actually on the April 28 study agenda, and then it was voted on seven, nothing at the May 7 regular. So, this, this was absolutely out there, and we discussed it at length at that time. And I know we've heard from a lot of residents talking about this process. But today's process is that we do send our, whether it's our police officers or a firefighter or whatever position, we do send them to these secure testing sites. This is not uncommon. This is something I had to do as a teacher to be licensed by the state of Michigan. I had to go to a secure testing site. You know, my daughter just took her boards from dental school. She had to go to this exact testing site. This is, this is pretty common. So, this is not something above and beyond, something crazy that Livonia's doing. This is something that is done across almost every municipality. It's, this is just common practice. And it may seem that it's an exorbitant cost, but it is, it is what it is. And, you know, I'm just, I'm struggling with why this has become such a hot topic tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Toye, do you mind if I just ask a quick question?
No, I don't mind. No problem.
Carter, just, and this is me not being the most savvy when it comes to the Robert's Rules, but since it's a study meeting, no votes are being taken today. Am I, do I need to pass the gavel? Or is it my pur, is it my purview?
You can offer comment.
Okay. So, if, Councilwoman Toye, do you mind if I speak to this?
No, go right ahead.
So, guys, I, I think this is following the recent budget meeting as well. You know, and so, the reason I bring that up is, is now we're talking about removing positions. We're removing people. And we heard very much doom and gloom at the last council, or at the, at the budget meeting. And I'm still trying to get my arms around it because we have a lot of different things going for us. We have the state's shared revenues going up. Long story short, I don't want to get into it in depth, but we have to look at things a lot different after that because the administration came to council and said, it is really, really, really bad. And if it's really, really, really bad, then there's certain things to potentially save people from being able to still put food on their tables and support families. And this is where I look at something like this. And I said, well, obviously, a priority would be to keep positions before we would entertain, to me, a fringe benefit in certain aspects. I, I do think that if times are good and the budgets are fine, I think that innovation, I think different expenditures are, are warranted. But the comments that we did receive from the administration, for public record, was that everything's bad. I, I mean, I, there's not much more I can say. I mean, we're talking about cuts to the point. And I applaud Councilwoman Sheil for bringing up things. I mean, we were talking about a potentially hiring freeze. And now, we're looking at an added widget in some facets to aid people in their jobs when we're asking other people to potentially lose them. And so, I think that the differences in time comes to every item that comes before us now that is out of the general fund, because losing employees should be the last possible position. And so, I think it's taking us a different direction. I, I'm just trying to acknowledge what I see from my seat. And I think that some of my colleagues that have questions on this, and some people from the audience would agree with that. So, that's my two cents on it. And I do agree on both sides. I do, you know, I've worked in multiple municipalities that, that use this tool as some functions. But we, whenever we're in a position and in somewhat of a healthy economy, at least what we're seeing, and where interest rates are potentially going down, state share revenues are up 3.2%, and we have somewhat of a healthy budget, but we're going to be cutting people. And we're going to be locking things. And capital improvement projects are, are zero. If you go through the list and not to, you know, belabor it, we're not doing anything. A lot of these CIPs, everything is frozen. It's bad. Bad, bad, bad. So, if it's bad, 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 why are we looking at things that we should be focusing on internal? So, that's my take. Councilwoman Toye, the floor is yours. We do have an approving and a denying on the regular.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, too, even though I wasn't at that meeting, I heard several reports on it as well, which troubled me a bit because I've sat and, sat on this council for, off and on for many years. And one was during the Jack Kerzey administration when we really had some very severe problems in dollars. We shut down libraries. We, we did a hiring freeze. We took pay cuts. We had a freeze on our council salaries. We had, we never, we never did removal of staff that I can remember. And I'll stand corrected if somebody finds it. But in all honesty, and that's not my question as much, I want to save dollars wherever we can save. I realize the importance. When it comes to, and I'm not trying to say police are more important, or fire is more important than the library, but we've already cut a library. We've got a Sandberg library, and we've got a Maine library. And when I get calls from people that work in the system and say, we've got qualified people, why are they going out? I got to question that. I'm sorry. But that, that's my role as a councilperson to, to respond to some of that. And that's why I asked a question to the director as well. And it's not only about money. It's about, are we hiring within? There's certain incentives that people look forward to when they work in jobs, like, you know, in my business. I want to be a designer one day. I don't want to be a clerk all the time, you know? And I, I operate on a much smaller scale than this. But I'm just saying, I think a lot of people in this city, and I don't want to speak for every employee, but there's some concern that they don't elevate up, that we hire outside a director, or it's a political appointment. And we've got to be careful of that as we move forward in this city, regardless of who's mayor, regardless of who's on the council. When I was in the state, we had to confirm people when they came through, and the governor appointed them. And then they'd come to the Senate, and we had privilege of interviewing them and confirming them. them as well. So, I mean, there's, there needs to be some different thoughts on some of this, and maybe this is the only game in town, this EPCO place or whatever, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate civil service for reaching out, but I also appreciate the fact that we have employees here that I've been told can do this job. And when we talk about a commission, I mean, no offense to the mayor, but they're appointed by the mayor. So, I don't know, you know, when you serve at the pleasure of someone, you tend to want to agree with them to keep your little job and keep your ego going. So, and I'm not saying all librarian people have egos, but we all have egos, or we wouldn't be here. So, all I'm cautioning us to do is, let's look within these departments before we jump and spend another $30,000, you know, on something that may or may not be needed. I, I respect the civil service director, but I also think a librarian person is a little different than a police captain, or a fire captain, or whatever, I'm sorry, police lieutenant, lieutenant police sergeant, or senior fire captain. That's just my take on it. That's my opinion as one council person. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll just note, Ms. Libel, this doesn't preclude current staff from applying.
It does not, and if, if you don't mind, I'd like to give some-
Please do.
Some clarity to this. Yes, the civil, I mean, excuse me, the library commission might be appointed, but in the charter, the library director is called out as a civil service position, so it's not a straight appointment. While the commission does the appointment, and they make the recommendation to the mayor, the library director goes through a civil service process. It's not, the mayor doesn't pick a person out of a hat, she doesn't say, "I think you're awesome, come be my library director," or, "Hey, commissioners, please make this person my library director." These people have to go through this test so that it is a blind process, so that they can take this civil service protected job, and it's not something that makes the library director into a political position. It's supposed to be a regular civil servant.
Thank you, Ms. Libel, because, again, we've been using MCO and these other platforms for many years now, it's so standard. That's why it was a 7-0 vote a few months ago, because we've been doing it forever. And I don't, I, we've never talked this much about these assessment centers over all the years until tonight, but there's campaigns, so that's how it goes sometimes.
If I also may, it's not extra money, I'm sorry.
And I'd like to note that, that this was already budgeted, you've been doing this for a long time, you planned for this, and all of a sudden now the budget is of importance, and people are saying that we might not have money. You prepared for this, you've been doing this for years, this is a standard budgeting item within your department for decades now.
Yes.
So there's no budget concerns there. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, Director, I didn't mean that the librarian was a political appointment, I meant that the commission was, I didn't want you to misunderstand that. I, I understand what we're doing to that point, except that I'm, I'm concerned about dollars, even though we had budgeted. There's going to be a lot of things as we go through this, I would guess, and even in a new council, they're going to take a look at, "Okay, you guys approved this and that on that budget, but because times are getting a little tighter than we normally do, we need to think of different ways or new ways." And I'm not saying MCO is the wrong way to go. I, I'm not on that side of the fence. I'm just saying, I appreciate you saying people can, you know, apply from within, that's all. That's all I would, I'm trying to bring out. I wasn't trying to ridicule the whole system, or not have an opinion on it, so I, I just wanted to clear that up, just in case. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So we have an approving, we have a denying, we're on the regular. Counsel, at this point, I would do the recommendation that we see where the vote goes and push it forward, if it needs to at that point in the voting meeting, goes to different things, we tackle it there. With that, I already went to the audience, so I'm going to move on to item six, is a request to authorize an additional expenditure. It comes to us, again, from the Department of Civil Service, in a not-to-exceed amount of $35,000 to MCO for the promotional testing of police lieutenant, police sergeant, senior fire captain, and additional testing for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 from budgeted funds, counsel.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to, I got the Vice President first, and then I'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think for consistency, we just did item five, I think item six is tied right into item five, just a different, a year. I, I don't know that we need to have a lot of discussion on this. I will offer an approving and denial just to keep it consistent, we'll put that on the regular, and I, in my opinion, I think we can move on at this point.
Perfect. So, Councilwoman Toy, we do have the same?
Mr. Chair, yeah, I think we've discussed this prior, as been pointed out, and I think that's a good suggestion, I was going to offer the same thing.
Perfect. Counsel, any other comments? Audience, kind of same stuff, just making a recommendation that we move on? You, it's, but it's a free, it's a free country here?
Free country.
Alright, fair enough, I'm moving on, thank you, guys. Listen, this is where the respect goes both ways, and I appreciate everybody. So, moving on, is an award of bid to the, this comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation, in reference for various types of clothing for a two-year period from budgeted funds. Good, good evening.
Thank you, Council President Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We are asking council to award, based upon our bid, the low bid in every single category, regardless of companies. You can see there's several companies that are getting bids here. These apparel, the apparel we're asking for ranges from summer camp t-shirts to staff shirts at the rec center, or hoodies for our park staff. It's a wide range of different products. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Mr. Chair.
I got Vice President, then I'll go to you, Councilwoman Toy. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Davis, for coming, and I did look at the bids. These are, this is not like fashion apparel, this is basically uniforms for the staff.
This is staff uniforms, again, camp t-shirts, softball championships shirts, or soccer uniforms.
Guards, etc., yeah, stuff that we absolutely need. And I appreciate that the bids were split up, you didn't just go with one, and you did try to parcel it out to the-
Again, straight across the board, low bid in each individual-
Appreciate the fiscal responsibility on these bids. I will offer an approving on consent. We absolutely need these, so.
Cool. Councilwoman Toy.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out these, our budgeted funds as well.
These are budgeted funds. I will say, this is also for a two-year award, so we are locking in prices for fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27.
Correct. Thank you. It's just, you know, we do have a viewing audience at home, and-
There are tens of people hanging on every word we're saying.
There's just everybody, we're going to start selling commercials. So, you'd want to make some things clear, if you know what I'm saying to you. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. So, counsel, all good? I'm going to go to the audience. Audience, anything? Alright.
No one makes t-shirts.
We have an approving on consent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got, item eight, is request to waive the sealed bid process and award a contract. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works, the Building Maintenance Division in reference to Phase II installation of building maintenance systems from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore, it's great to see you, how you been?
Good, counsel. Doug Moore with DPW. Counsel, this is building management system. This is going to upgrade, upgrade the management systems at the DPW garage, fire stations one through six, and the Housing Commission building. Currently, all those buildings, if we need to see it, we've got to go into the building to look at the thermostat. The technology that we had was 1980s, the parts that we were buying off eBay are no longer available, and it was time to upgrade the systems. Havel is the company that was chosen, basically because they're on the omnia-
Cooperative purchasing.
Yes.
Celebrating it.
Yes, and the pricing is $112,582, which is fully reimbursable by an EECBG grant, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant.
Yep.
So we will put the money up and then be reimbursed when the work is done.
Awesome.
Listen, counsel?
Approving on consent, if there's no objection from my colleagues. Great work.
Counsel, any issues?
Real quick.
Yes?
Real quick, if I may, Mr. Moore?
You may.
Mr. Moore, I just want to say thank you very much. We had a neighbor with a lot of foliage in the front of their house, called, you guys got a call, and within 20 minutes, they were there and cleaned up the entire site within, like, a half an hour. It was amazing, and three other neighbors, thank you very much for your service. Every time we called there, you guys have always been right on the ball, and I just wanted to commend you and your staff for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so we have an approving on consent. This one, audience, I'll go to you, but we've got a grant, and it's coming back, so let's celebrate Mr. Moore, and let's go Lions. Yeah, so I can do that, too. Alright, so that concludes the study agenda. Is there any other audience communications of items not on the agenda? The floor is yours.
Denise Micah, can't say we've been doing this hiring in Livonia like this for decades and decades. We have proof that it has not been. In fact, somebody that reported tonight was not-
So this is on the agenda, bring it forward at the next meeting, I would recommend, because we're already talking on the item that was already presented.
Okay, well, I just want to say that, you know, people think it's been forever.
Now we can just say, "Go Lions, rock and roll." The floor is yours.
Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. Just, just remember, we all remember, when we are elected in office, we serve the people, we don't serve ourselves, we don't, you know, I don't see anybody who really comes to these meetings and speak publicly and degrades the employees or the staff. People leave employment because they, either one, aren't paid enough, the environment isn't[1749.46]